This today. Have you seen this afternoon?
You never know.
Um, we not really because then we have the cameras pointed until yeah. I'm sorry to put my back to you here, sir. I'll turn this way in my smart pocket. Just don't throw any people out, alright?
Well, we could be on the way over towards the edge.
Yeah, it's just better to have that like there, if that's okay.
We ready to go? Okay, let's get this thing started. We're gonna start this study session on the comprehensive plan update. Ms. Lust, we'll just go over you and let you just kick us off.
Great, sounds good. So, um, welcome everyone. Thanks for being here. This evening, we're gonna be afternoon, lucky us, we're gonna be talking about, um, the land use element of the comprehensive plan. And in particular, draft land use goals and policies. This is gonna have a similar format that will be familiar to you of the the different goals and policies we've gone through in previous study sessions, including climate, economic development, and housing. So Julie, if you could move to the next slide, I have our agenda up. So we'll just go through some real brief background, just to ground everyone in in our context once again. And then move on to those draft land use goals and policies. And my goal for this this afternoon is really just to get, um, council's feedback, questions, ideas, for us to take and move forward on those. As I've said with the other goals and policies we've gone through, this is truly a draft. So your feedback is is very welcome, and that's why we're here. Alright, so, um, just to dip back a half step, last week, of course, council, um, you formally adopted your preferred land use alternative, which is a really, really big milestone in this process. That is a a big statement of what your vision is for the community. And, um, you know, that that wasn't fast or easy. It was it was a process to get there that really did, um, take a lot of collaboration, a lot of negotiation, and a lot of listening to the community. So congratulations, um, and from a staff perspective, thank you, because that gives us something really concrete to work off of moving forward. So that that is the map before you, hopefully you're familiar, but the sort of targeted growth, um, alternative that was council's preference. So when we we've been looking at and thinking about this map a lot lately, but when we are talking about the land use element of the comp plan, it's it's not just the map, it's the map and complementary goals and policies that support that map and are consistent with it, and work together to to build a planning framework over the next twenty years. So, um, with that, we'll go ahead and move into it. I will note that, um, these draft goals and policies, we did take to Planning Commission last week. That says May eighth, that should stay the seventh, but. And had a had a good discussion with them, as always. They had a a couple minor notes that, um, I did make changes on, which I'll I'll just call out as we move through these. But they didn't really have any, um, like major changes to suggest at this point. Alright, next slide please, Julie. So this is broken up into five goals with policies nested within them. So I'll go through one goal at a time and just have have a discussion on each one. So the first goal is really your your bread and butter of land use, which is land supply. Provide an adequate supply of land designated for residential, commercial, employment, recreational, and other purposes to meet the needs of the community, accommodate a variety of housing options, and provide jobs and economic activity to support the local workforce. And within that, we have drafted up five policies, um, speaking to that goal. I can I assume we've had a chance to read through those in the packet and not just narrate them to you?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, perfect.
We've been over these a couple of times, so I think we should be good right now, council.
I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for discussion.
Okay, uh, so I guess discussion on on this goal in particular, and then these policies. Yeah, Counselor Davis, we'll go to you first.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I was curious, would there be any benefit to calling out, um, land for utilities as well, or more like stormwater, I guess? I I guess it could nest under other purposes, but I'm wondering if there is any sort of advantage to calling that out, because that takes a, you know, a considerable amount of of land and resources when we're talking about development. It was, I guess, a like more of a inquiry. Like, would there be a benefit to that, or is it?
Would you wanna go more detailed than 1.1.1? So in looking at that, where it says public facilities, or?
Well, I guess that's my question. If we think it's safe to say for public facilities, but, you know, just calling out that, hey, we we recognize that that's like a big part of what our planning piece is, and that is going to be a factor when when, I guess, master planning is where those are. So if we think it's safely nested under public facilities, that's fine with me.
It's generally where we would have it live, because that's kind of the infrastructure deduction of public infrastructure, public utilities, including storm, and other kind of the other aspects of including roadways and otherwise.
That answers my question.
If that works. Yeah, no, that's good. That's that's why I was just putting it out there to see if we were, yeah, if we were good, alright.
I'd like to piggyback on top of Mr. Davis's comments there, because we could put in regional stormwater facilities, which would take care of multiple parcels, possibly consolidation, and you get more bang for your buck out of a big stormwater facility than you do multiple little ones.
That may actually, that may fit under 1.1.4, like enhancing that aspect of it. Because when we're talking about encouraging encouraging efficient urban land use, regional facilities is another way to encourage efficient use of limited space. So it's something we could include, because we talk about facilitating infill and redevelopment of smaller properties. We don't talk about consolidation of, uh, you know, of utilities, uh, infrastructure, uh, regionalizing facilities. But it's actually, it's a really good point that we, and we do that already. But calling that out as a priority in how we plan limited space makes perfect sense. Would that make sense to put under that one for you? And that would that get at a little bit, kind of at least enhance a little bit on the public facility piece? Okay, yeah, we can make that happen.
I think as we move forward too, um, I, yeah, I really appreciate that that idea and potential strategy. When we get to policy 1.3, I think there might be an other opportunities to sort of integrate that, um, infrastructure piece too. Oh, and just to note, the ones with the little tree icon, um, that is our indication that it is something that ties into the climate element. As we've as we've talked about before, the climate element is, you know, required to be a standalone thing, but it's really a topic that that weaves through everything else in the plan. So we're trying to establish those, um, those connections and touchpoints between the different elements. So that's what the trees are.
I guess with that in mind, as I read that one, like, like, you know, I know that we have work to do to expand on those policies, but is there thought either from council or from staff to say, what, you know, what are we specifically referring to there? When we talk about the redevelopment of smaller properties, and and how does that, um, how is that connected to the climate element there? I mean, though, I guess there's kind of a two-fold question there, but redevelopment is kind of perked my ears, and then also like just the climate element, and and what role that plays into that? Because I don't know that I know the answer, like what what's beyond just a statement there.
So a couple of different pieces of this. One of them, we can do a little bit more to help flesh that out for you in the policy itself.
Yeah.
For the purposes of 1.1.4, if you're asking specifically, like, how might that meld? How might that actually have a climate impact? It's primarily through vehicle miles traveled.
Okay.
And the efficient creation of urban infrastructure, including roadways. Is that in theory, theory, in planning world, is that, uh, the infill and redevelopment can utilize existing infrastructure and can, uh, lower overall vehicles' miles, vehicle miles traveled.
That makes sense.
However, the, obviously, the devil's in the detail, and how do these actually? And that's where the overall goal talks about housing options and a variety of housing options, and really focusing on that.
Yeah.
And so I I would hate to spend too much time on a sub-policy saying, okay, well, no, that's the focus. It's like, no, our focus is to provide a variety of options, including targeted expansions and redevelopment and infill, and housing options at a variety of different price points, and, you know, and making sure we have adequate lands. It all has to work together.
Right.
At least it does for us. There are others that would indicate to us that it is a one-size-fits-all. Everything should, every city should have the same plan, and it should be the same densification, and everybody should be together on that. That's not what the Growth Management Act asks for, and it's not what our community has asked for, or you have asked for.
Right, okay. Counsel, any other thoughts or questions on, um, on this goal in particular? I think I think we can probably move on then, yeah.
Great, um, let's move on to the next slide, which is goal 1.2. This one is focused on, I would say, the balance between civic needs and property owners' rights, which is of course, a really, really important part of land use planning. We are planning for land that people own and people live on, and, you know, people have the right to 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 use to its to its best advantage. So ensure sustainable development within the Ridgefield growth area by balancing property owners' rights with public policy objectives. So policy 1.2.1 gets into that clear and clear and objective regulations, making sure that we are being transparent in how we tell people what they can and cannot do with their properties. And then 1.2 and 1.3 sort of follow in a similar vein, but I will turn it back to council for your discussion.
Alright, council, this one, discussion on on any of these policies?
Have we had, had we had issues with property owners balancing their rights against public policy objectives? I'm not alert to any, but maybe there are.
I think an easy example of that is, uh, the 25% parks and open space set aside that we that we require. That is unique to our community, but that is a value, a public policy value, to provide parks and open space to connect with the natural environment that existed before the houses got built, and that people want to continue to connect with as they move here. From a private property owner's perspective, they look at it and say, well, wait, I could get more houses in there. Same thing with the Carty Road Subarea Plan, or the G Creek Plateau. You're constantly balancing the public policy needs for the community, as you see them and as you're representing them, with the property owners in those areas saying, I want to maximize the value of my property. So it is, yes, we deal with this on a regular basis. We deal with it, and and that is, that's why this exists as a policy, is because that has been, that's your job. And you guys, one of your biggest tasks is to try to balance those needs.
I also see a playing a role, like you think about RISE, and they, you know, the our downtown, like, looking at our downtown subarea plan, and how we'll go about that, like, you know, we've said, hey, we want to preserve the character and charm that downtown offers, and so that would mean that we would not want to, with like, you know, property owners there, we'd want to make sure that whatever they do with that aligns with that, I guess, that goal. That's one of our council goals. So looking at that, I think is is important as well, just these different areas we've set aside. You know, you go up to the junction, or you go up to, you know, like, the the neighborhood commercial areas, you know, where like, you know, where we have a lot of multifamily housing by Rozars and that area, and just making sure that we preserve that against maybe other other interests. Go ahead, yeah.
This is, it's similar to what the primary objective of this is. So I'll preface this by saying it's a little bit off that path, but it still feels relevant enough to bring up. Should should we have something in this that speaks to, more or less, our requirement that new development have HOAs? Because I, where my mind goes with like, property owner rights, I mean, it is the right of the property owner to buy in a neighborhood that has an HOA, but we have a pretty, you know, robust, you know, policy that new developments have to have a homeowners association. And it seems like that sort of dances in with a lot of this. And so I I understand that that's not like the primary focus. We're talking about our policy goals compared to like, the best interest of like somebody's actual property and putting in whatever it is. It just, it seems like that was as good a point as any of, would, is there a benefit to to speaking to, like, the value that we place in having homeowners associations within the community and development? And that was not as much a rhetorical question as like, I I'm 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 asking for opinions about whether or not it's worth speaking to that.
So, let me ask a question. So when we, I guess I haven't thought about this before, but so when a developer comes in, are they immediately told that they have, does the developer responsible for setting up the HOA? Okay, and then they turn it over to the to the property owners?
Yeah.
Which didn't work real well in Tavener Ridge.
No.
Okay. So maybe there should be something in there about HOAs. There's such a variety in the HOAs and in the costs and different things that it.
Judy, you are, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Chipman, you bring up, or Mayor Protem, can't even talk tonight. Thank you so much. I'm gonna go through the list until I get one.
You can call me whatever.
Queen. You bring up a good point, because with the Tavener Ridge, there is many different housing, types of housing within one development. And I'm not sure if that HOA is a one-size-fits-all. So I'm wondering if we should look into if a neighborhood has mixed use, or there's multiple different types of housing within one development, if the HOA should be adjusted accordingly to those specific, you know, areas. If it's larger homes, they'll have their own subset, and if it's townhomes that are tighter in together, then they would have theirs. But I'm looking at that example from Tavener Ridge, and I'm unsure if a one-size-fits-all is kind of the answer, and maybe we should explore something different.
You go ahead and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'm not disagreeing with anything that we're talking about. I guess as far as, you know, from the policies, it's almost like zooming to a higher level and speaking to the value that us is from a city perspective, um, when we're when we're incorporating new development, you know, the value that we have on these neighborhoods having homeowners associations. Whether that's worth speaking to in goal 1.2, or in this whole thing in general, whether there's an advantage to that.
And I think what you're getting to, counsel, there, I think, back to your point, counselor, is that, yes, we can zoom up to a policy level and integrate the thoughts on this, because there are different pieces of this that I'm taking away from it as far as the different types of housing. How do you ensure compatibility and sustainability of the development when you have the different housing types in a single HOA? How do you just assure that the transfer of that HOA from the developer to the, uh, homeowners is seamless and creates sustainability? Think about Paradise Point, where we know there are going to be lots of different HOAs. How do we assure that the maintenance requirements and associated with the park, and the, you know, and for the entirety of Paradise Point are integrated into each one of the CCNRs for the different HOAs? Or is it multiple HOAs? Like, how are you implementing that? How are we actually encouraging those things that you're speaking to? So to your point, yeah, I think it, there is a place for that. And then how do we, if we go up, you know, to a higher level in the policy, then how do we dig back down as we're implementing and creating development regulations, which is the next step, to get at the different pieces of what you're of what you're talking through? So, um, yes, I think there's definitely a place for it, and it's an interesting conversation that we're making notes to bring back as part of the implementation of development regulations for this.
Are there comments on it, on this policy, or this this goal in general, counsel? Okay. Moving right along.
Alright, efficient, just like our land use. Goal 1.3 is the one I mentioned that does tie together and integrate land use and infrastructure. So maybe a good opportunity to go back to that conversation about, um, efficient land use for infrastructure, but some other topics in here as well. So the language of the goal is proposed is designate land uses and implement zones to integrate development with surrounding land, and where adequate public services, facilities, and infrastructure can be provided to support long-term growth. We're thinking pretty broadly with infrastructure here, you know, not just roads, but parks and trails and those storm facilities, et cetera.
I think this, I don't know if this this touches on this exactly, but, you know, like, uh, you look at what the characterization is of of that land is, you know, like, we, you wanna, you wanna honor like the the uses that we we put in there, but you want to make sure that we're, like, I think that's one of the reasons why we we've been so, this council has been so adamant about about the, um, the target expansion areas that we have, right? Is is looking at how how is the use being characterized there? And is that, does that match what what is what's surrounded by? So the residential residential or commercial services or anything like that? So making sure we preserve that that sentiment there, because I think that's really what we've heard from from this council and from the community, is like, we want to make sure that where we're building out to and where we're expanding to actually fits with, I guess, what's around that, right? So if it's, if it truly is ag, then leave it ag. But if it's not being characterized by ag, if everything around it is is commercial, or if it's residential, then I think that we need to, we need to be able to to look at that in a way that matches the vision of the community, so. Go ahead.
I'm glad I got my own mic for this one. I guess two things. For one, policy 133 seems like it would be something that would have a tree next to it. Maybe more so than 3.4 would. But then my question is, can you explain what 136 is, the Wildland Urban Interface Code? If that's something that we would consider adopting?
Yeah, that's kind of a a new one for us, not something that we've we've talked about here before. But it is a code addressing, you know, communities, um, more so those that are directly up against natural areas where wildfire risk is is high and increasing. It's it's a hot topic now, so we wanted to include it in this list for for consideration. And does does that make sense for for Ridgefield, thinking ahead for the next twenty years? It's a, it's a building code, so International Code Council is the building code governing body. So it's it's a code that regulates, and Mr. Stewart is Googling it right now. It regulates how how things get built in areas with higher wildfire risk, basically.
So from the International Code Council, uh, what they say is that this code, it establishes requirements for land use and the built environment within designated wildland urban interface areas. And it establishes special regulations for the safeguarding of life and property from the intrusion of wildfire. Regulates ignition-resistant construction techniques, so in those areas that are more prone to wildfire, it creates ignition-resistant construction techniques and defense defensible space, as well as fire department access and available water supplies for fire suppression. Focuses on preventing ignition of buildings and vegetative fuels from direct exposure to wildfire and fire exposure, and it helps prevent structure fires in that area from spreading to wildland fuels, even in the absence of fire department intervention. So really, kind of focusing on that that area of demarcation, making sure that there there's not adequate fuel to move, you know, that you can basically stop the wildfires in that area before they get to adjacent areas.
Okay. And I get that, sorry?
Talking about the buffer.
Yes.
The buffer.
Correct, yeah, okay. And I get that we're not formally adopting, but saying, consider adopting, so that, I mean, because to me, that's like a whole nother big conversation, okay, cool, appreciate it.
How important are these little tree icons to each one of these? Is this just because kind of like a little, like a little marker, like kind of a note? Or is there other really real implication, policy implications we should be considering with the tree icons?
It's more a function of the plan itself, and showing that integration between the elements. I don't think it it changes the policy itself.
Yeah, okay.
At this point.
Shows how we're meeting it, shows how we're meeting the new goal, the climate goal and integrating that into our plan.
Gotcha, okay. Because I was looking at, yeah, three points, real quick, 3.5, you know, like that, we're talking about groundwater resources and talk about the quality of groundwater supplies. And, you know, and, you know, I look at what we're doing on pine expansion right now, where they're building the culvers, and there's, you know, fish-bearing stream going along there too, like, that feels like that's directly tied to the climate impact.
Yeah, we said, we're gonna put a tree on that.
Okay, yeah, he's all get trees, everyone gets a tree.
We're gonna throw it on everything, put a tree on it.
Yeah.
Which it does sort of get back to the point, but the climate element is, it touches everything.
Everything.
You could pick out a lot of goals and policies in here and say, yeah, that has to do with resiliency or greenhouse gas reduction, so.
Yeah.
I've got a comment, I just with a comment is, with the international code, sometimes it has adverse restrictions that you don't really realize that you're putting on the community. Because that code, and I, I, for an example, can share one thing. We turn it around and put it in a garage, and you can't put a heater in your garage, because it isn't efficient for the use of electricity. But we changed the garage to a workshop, we can put a heater in there. That, them are some of the things that I'm trying to bring forward, that sometimes you put a restriction by adopting a code, and then you suffer the consequences.
Yeah, I I mean, that's why it was like, you know, we're not being bound by how this is written right now. So, I mean, it definitely needs a deeper dive.
Looking at all of the things we are attempting to do regarding climate, what is the expectation regarding the results of what we're doing and how it's going to lower world temperatures?
To be frank, I think our our tracking is gonna be at a more local level with what what we're expected and can reasonably track moving forward. I I do think, if if I were to speculate on, you know, one of the purposes of this legislation is that if it starts at a local level, and it's not just, you know, a jurisdiction here or there, but it's a requirement, then that that builds, that builds up from the ground up in a way that we have the opportunity to build it up in a way that makes sense for our community, I guess.
I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't, I'm just interested in how is this going to impact the world? I look at our efforts, and then I look at the efforts of other major countries. And example, India recently stated they weren't going to start until eighty-five. So I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just, I'm interested in where it's gonna go ultimately.
Yeah, and I I think I think we do have, you know, like, to what Claire was saying, I I think we do have a responsibility there, but that that is affected at the micro level, right? You say, so, you know, like, I think the pressure that we're feeling a lot through this comp plan process right now is is urbanization. And with that comes maybe less, like, you have to be more cognizant of of like, again, looking at 3.5, where we have to safeguard groundwater resources, right? Like, that that plays a role in that, or what Mr. Stewart was just saying, miles traveled. If you can reduce miles traveled, then you're having a micro impact on your community, and that may not affect the overall temperature of the the earth, but it might do some good here, and it also provides really just kind of a better, more sustainable community in general, I think. I don't know. That's my shot at it. Yeah? Anything else on this one, council? Okay, we can keep moving.
All right, let's move on to goal 1.4. So the goals 1.4 and 1.5 are both really about, I would say, place-making. Integration of communities, 1.4 is a little more on the residential side and then 1.5 on the non-residential side. So 1.4, create vibrant and well-connected neighborhoods that offer a diverse mix of housing and are designed to enhance pedestrian safety and promote a high quality of life for all residents. Back to you.
Who's, who wants to go on this one?
I do have something.
Yeah.
This was the one where, I mean, knowing that this is a goal of GMA, would we want to implement something about historic preservation? I mean, we have some very historic areas, especially in our downtown area. And historic preservation is a component of GMA. And so, to me, I think that's something that speaks to policy, or in a policy way, about our values towards historic preservation.
Look to the next one. If you can wait until the goal.
Okay, okay, okay.
Wait till the next one, cause like, I think, I still think it needs to be added, but I think it's, we'll just.
Yeah, 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 yeah. This is just where, I remember when I was going through it, it popped up to me in my brain. So I was like, well, maybe we should add it to this one, but anyway, I can be patient.
We do, so our current plan, the 2016 to 2035 plan actually has a historic preservation element. Not a required element, but in 2016, that was, you know, brought forth as something that was important to the community. And we are working on, you know, looking at that and seeing how it could be updated. But this is making me think, like, okay, that could be its own element or it could be part of the land use element. So, yeah, good, good point, thank you.
And maybe it's worth looking at the next one as well for this, but like, I just, I think about that, like, this is definitely like on a high level touching that place-making. But we're focusing on things like 4.1, right? Mixed-use neighborhoods compatible with housing, jobs, commercial, retail, public spaces. But like, you know, I think about our overpass, I think about our roundabout design, all of those types of things. Are those types of things that we need to have as a top-level policy that really encourage and support that idea of place-making as well?
And I think, and we can work on this, the goal, this goal was set up to be more about walkability, bikeability.
Yeah.
Connections that way and less about the quality. Although we talk about quality of life in this and connected neighborhood. But it was trying to get at having neighborhoods where you can walk or bike or golf cart between these areas and that they were accessible that way. But that you are going to, I mean, I hear you guys kind of moving on to this next one of place-making, which the next goal really does hit on both of those.
Yeah.
Like, maybe we need to be a little more, either number one, be a little more focused and clear in 1.4, or kind of putting that out to you, is that a goal that should stand alone? That walkable, bikeable, kind of like those types of communities and promoting that as one of our land use goals? Is that something that you think is a standalone or should we integrate it into something else?
Well, I guess, I guess, look at that, I wonder, like, how does this, how is this really more, like, what's the land, the actual land use component of this? Because we just did the transportation plan and we talked a lot about some of these things too, like wanting to have more trail connectivity, multimodal access, you know, walkable areas. That's what I go to here as well, but what's the land use component here? Like, how does that directly tie into this one?
So zoning for mixed use, you know, so when you have it in here, the, you know, mixed-use neighborhoods with a mix of housing, jobs, commercial, retail, because then it makes it a more walkable, bikeable area. The land use, actually looking at the mix of housing and their distance from different amenities and services. The parks and trails piece of this, that's also a land use component that is implicates and is implicated by this. So those, those aspects that are in here, but again, they maybe aren't as crystal, they're not as clear.
Right.
My only comment is, is when I read through them, we initiate every one of them already. I mean, you read 142, you're all through that. That's, that's something that's already a policy. Are we just adding to the policies we've already got?
It's not really adding to them, it's just reaffirming them. This is a new plan, so if it's not in there, it's not part of the, what we would be doing.
A reaffirming, yes, okay.
We can, we can work on this a little bit to get, to tighten that up.
Yeah, like 4.2, like improved pedestrian connections, enhanced neighborhood identity.
That's a little broad, right there. Enhanced neighborhood identity, like.
Yeah, that's where, that's where I guess where I read it and, you know, feel like this is like a place-making thing too, but what we're really talking about is connectivity, not necessarily, and I guess that plays into neighborhood identity, but it feels a little.
But one of the talks about all that.
Yeah, well, I guess that's where I say, like, I'm fine with keeping it, just to reinforce it, but it feels a little out of place.
We could also, I mean, something else we could also look at is, there's only two policies written in here right now. Do we find better homes for those within the other four goals? And potentially use, you know, 1.4 as a place-making policy? If that's of interest to council particularly.
1.3? So 1.3, we were, sorry. In 1.3, we were talking about infrastructure and Director Lust talked about the, that infrastructure is more, it is more than just roads. And public infrastructure includes bikes, you know, it includes trails and parks and sidewalks and connections. So we have a lot of policies already within that for infrastructure, because it's a big, it's a big deal. For obviously, you know, when you're building, when you have a growing community, you have to have the infrastructure, the foundational support for that, for that community. But it could fit in there if we wanted to do kind of those connections. They could fit within that, within the infrastructure goal. But we can do it either way, so.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to add it to 1.3, like, or like collectively have those together and then maybe be more place-making in the other one, that makes sense to me.
1.4 looks like it would go under, it would fit well under this.
Yeah, I think so. I think there's value in, make sure those are still included, but where they're included, I think I'm okay with that. Any other questions on this one or considerations, council? Okay.
All right, number five, which is the last one for now. Last one proposed, is promote community identity and enhance compatibility to foster a sense of place and connection in Ridgefield. So at that goal level, definitely that place-making and identity. A lot of the policies in here are around specifically non-residential development, including downtown and the waterfront.
This one to me really captures, I think, the vision, I think, that we've all been talking about, like, you know, like beyond any other policy, because this is really the visionary aspect of, like, we say, we spend a lot of time talking about why, why is Ridgefield growing? Why, what, why is it significant to us that we're adding birds on overpasses or In-N-Out burgers? You know, like, what are, what are those things? And that's all about kind of community design and identity. So, yeah, I'm, I like everything here. I'm just trying to think if there's anything we need to add to it.
Counselor Davis, you had something?
Well, yeah, the, I mean, I think specifically calling out like historic preservation.
Yeah.
On this. I mean, it, well, I think it could use its own policy. And I don't know exactly how to word it. I mean, to me, it was at first like 1.54, but, you know, with the small-town charm and things like that. But I just don't, I think it would be an afterthought if it was just added into that mix.
And counselor, if I may ask, so when you're speaking to historic preservation.
Yeah.
What are you thinking of?
You know, I mean.
What's the vision?
Sort of, the vision is very broad, but just recognizing it from a policy level, you know, incentivizing the, well, I mean, the preservation of like, more of our like historic spaces and our historic homes. I mean, I think about some of the homes that are across the street, you know, and around there. And, I mean, not only do they have a lot of character and bring a lot of, you know, charm to our downtown area, but they're, they're an important part of our history. And, you know, I certainly wouldn't want somebody that's like, nah, you know, I'm gonna buy the block and, you know, we're gonna throw up something different. Like, to me, there's an element of historic preservation, we would say, hey, there's this and that. I think there's other elements related to place-making about different parts of town. You know, different, you know, our agricultural past, I think.
Our heritage.
Our heritage, yeah. And so, yeah, I mean, to me, that's a lot of place-making, is understanding our community's history. I think it's more important now than almost ever, just because of all the growth that we have had, a lot of people that don't know the story of the community. So, yeah, I guess it's telling our story in appropriate ways, but also, you know, to an extent, like, I mean, you look at our city hall building. Like, there's, we should have something that says it is our value to maintain that building from a historic perspective. And, you know, what the, you know, what the policy verbiage is of that, you know, can't really come up with off the top of my head, but that's kind of where I'm getting at.
Mayor Potem.
I've been thinking about, you know, the design for a new building. And I know Counselor Burkle said one time that he didn't want to see a brand-new, very modern building on that empty lot, right? But yet, we built the TMI building and it's pretty modern-looking. This is pretty modern-looking, and so it's kind of like, what's the blend, you know, between what's really modern-looking and what's, what we're gonna, you know, be able to keep? And what are, what's our design standard gonna be when we, when somebody comes in and wants to build a new building? That, and we expect the waterfront buildings to be, you know, pretty new. And so I think it's gonna be hard to determine what, what we're gonna allow. You know, what is our design standard gonna be that's gonna kind of keep, you know, keep the theme of what we have? We don't want everything to be built like an old building, but yet, you know, I mean, I think the brick kind of maintains the sense of, you know, of the historic. But I think that's gonna be challenging for us to see what's gonna be built and keep the look and yet have the new modern also.
I mean, it's definitely like a bigger conversation and, you know, there are positives and negatives. And sometimes people view the restrictions on a property they own as more of a, you know, a nuisance, you know? And maybe, you know, policies that, you know, are maybe a little too rigid than they need to be. And so, I mean, that, just to say that it's a bigger conversation in terms of what that looks like. But I feel like it is probably been, in general terms, like a value that our council has had of saying, yeah, there are historic elements to our city that we would like to have preserved in some way and be able to share the story.
Towards just the downtown area?
Well, I, I think that.
All over the city, there's, there's things of historical.
Yeah.
Significance, right?
Things of historical significance. And I'm sure that once we started digging in, there would be, you know, areas where we're like, hey, if we did this, it might impact what we could do in this area. And those are, those are important conversations to have. So that's why I'm not trying to be like super specific about it. But just speaking to that, that is a value we have, both from a, you know, in certain circumstances, yeah, maybe preserving specific buildings and parts of the town or around the city, but also telling the story.
I think, just real quick, I think determining the significance, that's, that to me is the operative term there, like, you know, because what you, what I can quickly see happening is it will make it hard for progress to happen. It'll be inhibited of progress. So I, just as a, probably a pithy example, but the jail. Like, you know, like, there was a little bit of consternation about, do we keep the jail or not? And what, you know, what you heard from a lot of people is like, well, city council was okay with it or city was just gonna tear down this old jail and that's been there for 100 years. Well, no, it wasn't, right? And so to me, there wasn't a lot of historical significance, that there's components there that we preserved. But again, you don't want to limit things, you know, what you don't want to do is say, everything's historic because it's old and therefore we can't have any sort of like development or progress around that. We, I just want to make sure that if we, if we codify that in any sort of way, that we're not making progress difficult, because I think that's important as well. Who was gonna speak?
Thank you. Counselor Davis, as you were speaking, I was thinking of the storytelling boards that we have in various places and how cool that would be to, as we have connectivity with trail systems and connecting, you know, the other side of the freeway or Costco to downtown, is having storyboards, not just downtown, but kind of placed in separate areas in Ridgefield, talking about what was here before, or, you know, what came before. So it's really throughout Ridgefield and not just in this place where we can preserve that history.
I think that's it too, like, when you think about what, why is history important, right? Is it the things? Do we turn into sort of like pack rats? You know, we start keeping artifacts or buildings or whatever around more than they need to be? Or is it the stories that you're telling about that and being able to kind of like touch on those in a very personal way? I, I like the idea of that, like we say, we're telling the story versus preserving this building that probably should have been torn down, but look, it's historic, so we're gonna keep it. It's got no other use beyond that. Counselor Wells.
Only comment I got is the corner store.
Mm-hmm.
Was that preserved or upgraded? Is that unacceptable or is that acceptable?
I think it's very acceptable.
Yeah, I mean, so that was a big change from what it was and it was upgraded and it's, it's really nice. So it's not the historic building that was always there.
No.
Yeah, so. It's a double-edged sword.
All, yes. All fair, all fair points. Ken? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna note that in your point about having, you know, more information exhibits, what have you, in different areas of the city, we're actually working with Mr. Lottie on his property right now, which has the farm complex, working on mitigation measures for when those buildings are removed. Cause that is a commercially zoned property, we expect it to develop. And one of the things we've agreed to in, as a mitigation measure, is some kind of interactive exhibit on the property that might use some salvage materials from the site and have historic, you know, family and farm photos and tell the story of what was there before, which I think will be really cool.
I absolutely love that idea. I love visiting, one of the firehouses in Vancouver has historical pictures from the early 1900s and what the fire department looked like or downtown Vancouver. And it's not about the fire department, it's just the pictures and the history that tells a story where you're like, this, in the early 1900s, this did not, this is what this looked like and this is how we've evolved and we've grown, but we haven't, we're still retaining that story of what it was before, because change is inevitable, it's going to happen. But it also kind of, it takes you back for a minute and it really is exciting to look at what was here before and then to kind of look around and be like, oh my gosh, this is a lot of growth, a lot of change, how cool.
I know we did that with Greeley Farms over on the east side. And they used parts of that barn to build like the new playground there. And I, there's like, I think, a little plaque there. But that's the kind of like historical preservation that I think is like really valuable, not like a whole, but maybe a part to where you can say, like, this is, you know, this is what is here. And it's always stuck out to me as like, that's part of our story here, you know, the Greeley family. You know, the Greeley family and what, you know, what they contributed to pioneering what Ridgefield now is. So being able to like, like that, I think what Counselor Favela is saying, I very much resonates with me, like having those little things that you can keep telling the story that keeps kind of living on, but not necessarily having to preserve whole pieces of it, so.
Yes, I was going to make a comment, we don't have a museum in Ridgefield. And I'm not suggesting a museum, but I think these ideas that you're talking about would be good to have in each and every individual building of what it looked like in the past and what it looked like in, in between and what it looks like today. And people would be walkable and take a look at what, you know, we would preserve the past by digging up old photos and that. And we've got some old photos of Main Street, I think down at the port and that. And intertwine them all throughout the city to draw people in just for that. I, I mean, I, I would stand behind that a hundred percent as, as a council objective that you're put forward. And it would be for lasting forever.
Well, I, I was just going to say that I, I'm kicking myself now because on my shortlist from our retreat of priorities, my shortlist included establishing a historic commission. And I kind of wish I would have brought that idea forward because I think I might have had some legs to it, but. I figure, you know, maybe to bring it up now, now then, you know, better late than never. So maybe that is something that down the road aside, outside of this.
Prime example is right, right here where we sat, where the old high school was. And what it is today. We still got the steps out there and I don't know where the bell is at. Is it up at the high school? But some of those pictures like that before and after.
It's, this is certainly, I, I think there's like a lot of interest and passion on this topic. I mean, I, I know I'm interested in it, I, specifically this goal is around land use, like kind of tied back to land use policies. I do think that it'd be worthwhile adding like a one point, five point six. And they're talking about historical preservation, but with just some of the, the comments baked in here today. Very broadly, yeah, and like not, I don't want to restrict us, you know, what we can do in the future, but I do think it's, it is important to have something like that.
So mayor and council, with the breadth and the depth of the conversations you've had on this, might I suggest us looking at a, we already, we dropped a goal, so like, I mean, if we only had five, which you can do as many as you want. But if we only had five, you've dropped one, so, because you consolidated one point four into one point three, we could absolutely look at a goal for historic preservation as a goal. We had it as an element last time, which is even higher level, where you actually had an element with goals under it for historic preservation. So instead of taking it from an element to a policy, we could have a goal that talks about historic preservation, heritage, storytelling. I mean, there's some really good, some really good stuff that I'm hearing from you all. I would hate to lose the, the granularity of what you're speaking to because we only have one policy and we're trying to lump it all together.
Right. I, I, I love that idea, I think that there's enough interest around this, I think that it would be worth pursuing, so, yeah.
There is some group here that does do some historical stuff that I've talked to at some point and I can't remember, I don't remember the names of who it is, but there is a group. Well, and this was a group of women though, and maybe Ken was part of it, but because I think, aren't they the ones that found the picture? We, we found the pictures at one point, right? We found some very old pictures because I mean, they brought back my childhood of, you know, when I came downtown here to where the doctor's office was where the yoga place is and the, I mean, all of that. I mean, it just, just like that, it flashed into my mind because.
And there's lots of ways to implement that, like this, it's pictures, it's, I mean, it's the elements, it's the playground, it's the tree in Pioneer Village that is historic. It's how do we tell those stories and how are we actually connecting people with the stories? I know a lot of people, tree as an example or the playground example, they don't know the connection to the history of it. So I can use those pictures, but also tell the stories of it. There's just a lot we can do with it to get to what you're saying. I think, yeah, absolutely.
I, I think, I think we should. I, at, at least in draft form, like we don't, we might ultimately say, ah, there's really not as much here as we thought, but you know, if we were to, to draft that up and look at like those and how we, how we continue to preserve history, I think that's really important.
I think there's enough, you know, there from our conversation just now that we could probably, I, I think it's worth drafting up, see what it looks like.
Okay, well, there you go. Never mind those other five policies we just did, those are good.
Anything else on one point five?
Anything else, council? Okay, no.
All right, thank you so much.
That's it?
That is it.
Okay. All right. Are, are we going to adjourn? Yeah, then you, yes.